To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Paulus.
Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a correction.
Second, anyway, then we'll do the correction.
Correspondence, number four in the minutes. Mr. Goslow asked if anyone would like to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Commission, not the Charter Review.
I thought it was the Charter Review.
No, it's a comprehensive community plan.
It was comprehensive.
Confensive community plan.
But you said Charter Review.
Yeah, no, no.
Did you think that?
That's what was said.
Comprehensive community plan.
But it isn't that, oh, okay.
Comprehensive Plan Commission.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Yeah, that would be.
Just make that correction.
Okay.
It's the Bible.
Okay, is amended now? The minutes?
Yes.
All those in favor? Mr. Rarick?
Yes. I'm sorry, I was talking to Mr. Black.
The retirements or whatever?
Retirements, music, middle school retirement, Gary Pointe, Pointe's middle school art long-term sub, Carrie Fletcher, and the Tiverton Middle School PE long-term sub, Allison Lewis.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Point for all his years helping all those students through the years, he was amazing. Okay, going to move that one up now.
I'd like to make a motion to move item 6A, Spotlight on Success, up.
Okay, all those in favor? Project electric vehicle, bridge building, oh, first, the electric vehicle, right, Mr. Rarick?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ed from Andy's. I'm here to tell you all about Endurance. Our latest project in our electric vehicle lab. Can we bring her in?
Sure.
Hannah, are you ready?
On my way, sir.
Very good.
Yeah, and if it gets out of control, you're gonna have to jump up on a saddle. It doesn't have brakes. That's why they run it around the track, here it comes. Now get ready.
Great bunch of kids, absolutely.
Could you introduce the...
Oh, I sure will. Team members seen as Ryan Merka, Zach Silveira, and my test drivers Hannah Cook-Dumas and Alec Figurito, grade nine.
Thank you.
Our challenge was to build a working prototype of an electric vehicle from off-the-shelf parts. Keep the budget around a thousand, and we wanted it to go at least 20 miles with a driver of average weight of less than 150 pounds. We also named it Endurance to give it a little historical value after Ernest Shackleton's Antarctic ship Endurance that he used to explore the South Pole region. We started with a lightweight chassis, just composite PVC pipe. We used standard brakes, and we added a regenerative braking function, which, for those of you who are not familiar with it, once the brakes are applied, it puts electricity back in the batteries to extend the range. We just used standard bike wheels and tires with smaller wheels in the front and alloy rims to help it steer a little easier. The front ends, we used an old kingpin design. You used to see these on the old Packards in the 40s, but very reliable, and we added tie rod ends, which gave us the capability of giving it a full front-end alignment, just like a regular car. Propulsion, we used the pancake motor design, DC brushless, fits right into the hub, very nicely done alloy wheel, and it runs on 12-volt sealed lead-acid batteries, just like a car battery, three together to give us the 36 volts and 18 ampere hours. The controls are all on the steering wheel. The button on the left is the cruise control. The thing on the right is the thumb throttle. It's got a main power switch and a charge port, which makes it technically a plug-in electric vehicle, because we can charge it right off of 110 volts. We also added a volt meter at the last minute, which serves as a digital fuel gauge, so the driver can tell at all times how much electricity is left in the batteries. Okay, performance. The amount of power we had to work with was really equal to about seven 100-watt light bulbs, 0.9 horsepower. We did accomplish the weight limit of 120, came in at about 110. It has a top speed of 18. The distance it went was further than our calculated distance. It actually went 33 percent longer. We thought it would only go 18 miles, but it went 24 miles, and it was still going. We ran out of time. Miles per gallon equivalent, watts, that equals a gallon of gas, is 422 miles to the gallon, and it costs less than a penny a mile to run it. This, we feel, of course, accomplishes STEM education, the science being the materials, the composite and the aluminum, the technology, the electronics, the engineering of using parts that were never meant to go together to make the working prototype, and the mathematics of the calculations of horsepower, watts, and miles per gallon equivalent.
Look at this, top speed 18 miles per hour, and it can get the equivalent of 422 miles per gallon.
It's a prototype made by technology students at Tiverton High School.
And NBC 10's RJ Heim is live now, back at the studio now after a test drive. How was it, RJ?
Oh, this was a lot of fun. It was cool, the first of its kind in the Ocean State, cost a thousand bucks to make, and you may want to start dancing now, because best of all, it's electric. The Department of Technology Education at Tiverton High has named this electric car, built from scratch, Endurance. We can talk all day on the blackboard about theory, and about numbers, and math, and electronics, but it's best to go to the bench and prove what we've learned. The small specialized energy class, two students, two drivers, one teacher, spent a thousand dollars on parts.
It works off.
And 600 class hours.
Throttle.
On a 110-pound, all PVC pipe chassis, alloy rim, 36 volt, DC motor, plug-in electric vehicle this past year.
It's great being in something that you designed and helped build, and then finally seeing it working and being able to drive it around.
It's pretty cool, isn't it? While Endurance here is made for drivers who are 5...
Four.
420 pounds, it can still handle someone who's 5'10", 165. Hey, I think I'm peeling out.
You don't want to have too much weight in it, because then, like, the power-to-weight ratio, you won't have enough power for the weight, and then it affects, like, the efficiency of it.
If designed right, in conjunction with power tweaking at home, electric vehicles can reduce the carbon footprint. Well, in this case, we've calculated that if you were to change the lights in your house to energy-efficient lights, such as LED, the savings would more than pay for the running of your electric vehicle. Now, Endurance is a prototype that'll be added to in the years to come. It can go up to 30 miles on a charge. Down the road, on the drawing board, guess what's up? A secondary battery charging system, a solar roof, and a small wind turbine, all designs they plan on patenting. RJ Heim, NBC 10.
Our goal for next year is to continue the work, streamline the design, bring the weight down. We're gonna turn it into a recumbent design, which is sort of a trike and reverse. We're gonna take the motor and stick it behind the seat, make it a little longer. And if that secondary battery system we've got in mind works, I don't see why we can't get 75 to 100 miles distance out of a charge. And 500 to 600 miles per gallon equivalent is not out of the question. To wrap up, I'd like to thank the people who support us. Eugene Moran, who donated $595 for the electronics. Aquidnic Fast, that gave us a lot of hardware. Westport Bicycle, gave us some tires and did some wheel work. And Bob Johnson from Lanix Solutions gave us most of the PVC for the chassis. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Would you like one of those in gold for Mrs. Black?
Sure thing. Sure thing, we got some nice gold paint.
And the bear can go in it, he's overweight, but he could...
That's okay.
So what was it, was it just this year? What was the timeframe?
We started cutting up the material in January, and we finished about two weeks ago.
Okay.
So right on schedule.
Right on schedule.
Absolutely.
And how many hours did you do in school time, and how many after-school?
We did all during school.
Okay.
And about 400 hours between all of us. We only had a couple of hours a day, so...
That's amazing, thank you so much. Wonderful job.
Somebody want to take it out?
Does it go in reverse?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's got reverse also.
Reverse?
Yeah, it even backs up.
That's really something.
Sure thing.
Thank you so much, wonderful, wonderful job. And the next one, Mr. Rarick?
Next one, it's still with career education. I'm not sure if Mr. Phillips is up or Mr. Fenster.
Uh, Mr. Fenster, but you always got a couple, many of you. While Zach is setting up, I have just a few updates on our boat building program. We were published in a magazine. In the summertime, we sent in a picture and a little article about our boat building program, and woodworking, Wooden Boat Magazine, it's a magazine that... I don't know, I think I have it for them. It teaches wooden boats that are built by teachers, students, you know, just regular people. The front cover was given out to us about a month ago, and then on the inside, they say section called Launchings. Our boat is in the bottom, and with a nice little write-up. I've gotten some nice emails from people all over the United States, asking questions, looking for blueprints. So it's been a, it's been nice to see that the kids were able to look in the magazine and see their product. It's really nice, it's been fun. Mrs. Santa made a connection for us with Sail Newport and Sail Rhode Island. I'm not sure if everyone knows, there's a tall ship being built, the Oliver Hazard Perry. We're going to be making some wooden parts for this ship. We're gonna go out there this summer and do some dimensioning and those types of things, and the Tiverton High School kids are gonna be involved, and I think that's great, that we're gonna, gonna help out with a real, you know, 225-foot-tall ship. And I'm hoping that eventually, we might be able to maybe get some of our students on a sail. It's gonna be a teaching, learning vessel. So, thank you for that, and it's been, it's been great. One more thing, our two, our two SKFs are all ready to be taken out of the shop. They're, they're really nice-looking boats. The people are really excited to have them. One will be in the Nanakwaket Pond, and another will be at Sakonah Point, a real, working, you know, 16-foot, you know, boat. So the kids did a great job. It's exciting to see them, you know, go out the door, and we'll do it again next year. So, we're going in the right direction, we've got great kids. If, you know, I know you all know that, but I wish that some of the elementary and middle school, you know, people could see what these kids are doing. You can see, it's fabulous. So they've really, you guys did a great job, and they're bringing it right to high school, and it's, it's great to see, so, thank you.
And you're so excited, that's great.
Thank you.
It's fun, it's fun.
I'm Mr. Fenster. I took over the engineering classes here at Tiverton High School back in October. Just to back up Billy, his boats are actually pictured in this film. I was instructed to be extremely short and brief, so this was about five or six minutes. I got it down to about three, three and a half minutes. What it is, it's just kind of a makeup of all the different projects that we've done in engineering this year. And throughout this video, you've probably noticed that the classroom changes quite a bit, because over the year, we put a lot of time, myself, the maintenance, everybody really contributed, we had a new computer lab down there and everything. So, also, the two, it's gonna start off, you'll notice, with CO2 track that I built, that the kids are actually, right now, making vehicles to race down it. And then you'll see the bridge-building competition, a couple other little projects, and then it finishes up with Mr. Phillips' boat building.
actually all over the country. The goal is hopefully, you know, for next year, obviously, just still preliminary talking. I'd love to host one here at Tiverton High School, and maybe like invite, you know, Mount Oh, that was like 40 miles now. Hope High School and Portsmouth, maybe just start off with one or maybe two schools, bring them here and compete against them doing bridge-building, these car races, some model rockets, and compression tests, and other things of that nature.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You know, just quickly for everyone here, these are the types of classes that we fight for every day. These are the types of classes that are going away across the state, and these are the types of classes that we understand how valuable they are to Tiverton and Tiverton students, and we fight for them every year. We fight to keep them in the budget, and we fight to keep them going, so it's great to see all the support here for them as well.
And I didn't see one book in any of those classrooms, and I saw a lot of learning going on, so that's what we have to remember. Mr. Rarick, we have a civics award, could we put in before the next one? Ms. Janik, and... Thank you. They have a game to go to. Okay.
Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Janik, I'm a senior this year at Tiverton High School. And myself, along with Sam Turner, who is not allowed to be here, because he's actually having a senior game for lacrosse, he wasn't allowed to come and speak for you. We were chosen by our teachers and guidance counselors to be the civic leaders of Tiverton High School, and we were nominated, and we were honored at the State House this past Friday for our community service and academic achievement.
So, I'm representing Sam Turner, who's playing lacrosse up at the, up at the field. This is just a copy of what the Secretary of State gave to both Sam and Elizabeth. Ralph Malas, Secretary of State, congratulates both of them at Tiverton High School as the recipients of the 2013 Secretary of State Civic Leadership Award. Be it resolved that I, a Ralph Malas, Secretary of State of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations, commend Samuel Turner and Elizabeth Janik for demonstrating outstanding leadership skills, a strong academic record, and selfless contributions to his or her school and community. So it was a, it was a great evening up at the State House for, for both of the students.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
The next one, Mr. Rarick?
Mrs. Dias Mitchell's here from the middle school to introduce the unified basketball team.
Mr. Phillips provided a nice segue, because he is one of the parents that I would like to thank. He and his wife have been amazing unified basketball team, mom and dad, you are just awesome, I want to thank you. We have our first-ever unified basketball team. And I know, winning is not everything, but to this rookie principal, I enjoyed those wins. We had a four-and-one season. We are an attorney on Thursday, we will be playing three consecutive games, 16 minutes apiece at Providence Country Day. And our unified basketball team has really unified our building, and it has provided a nice feeder program for Mr. Fizette's wonderful unified basketball program up here at Tiverton High School. And some of our eighth graders will be coming up. Bad for us, great for your team. And many of the members are here tonight, were athletes and partners, and I want to first thank our two coaches, Mr. Scott Tibbitot and Mr. Adam Tracy. They work with these kids. They're taskmasters, sometimes I had to do one of these, but they certainly did a great job. I would like to thank Deirdre Gao, she is our special ed coordinator at Tiverton Middle School. She and I designed the uniforms. I'm not sure we did a great job. We had foxes and all sorts of things, we've learned. Next year, we'll make them less lame. I'd also like to thank Kelly Levesque. Is she still here? Yes, Kelly. Kelly is an incredible supporter of the middle school in every way, shape, and form. And she provided snacks, and drinks, and directions, sometimes we didn't take them, got lost a few times. Thank you very much, Kelly. And Samantha Kavanaugh, you have been absolutely my bus buddy wherever you are. Sam, where are you?
Hi.
Oh, here's Sam, she's tall enough, how can I miss her? She and I did not miss, in a way, we didn't miss any games, but we actually went on the bus with the kids. I'm not sure they liked that, but we did a lot of shushing, and sit down, sit down, sit down, but we still had a lot of fun through it all. Shaw Tillinghast is not here, she was also our home game and our away game manager, and she was absolutely pivotal in many pieces of this team's success, especially some of the logistical pieces of it. Each of our members has just something very brief that he or she would like to share with you about his or her experiences on this wonderful team. So Dylan Bowday, will you come up just very quickly and share, Mrs. Mitchell's right here with you, and share what it meant to you?
Teamwork, I like being part of a team. Fun, it's fun to play on a team with my friends.
So glad for you. Excited.
I felt excited when we won our games.
Me too.
Proud, I felt proud when I got my uniform.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. Ellen, would you like to come up just for a few seconds? Thank you so much, Dylan.
Say a few words. I was very proud to take part in the first Tiverton Middle School Unified Basketball Team. It was a great opportunity for both me and my teammates, and I enjoyed watching the members of our team come together through their differences to play basketball. It was a memorable part of my year.
Thank you so much. Dylan Drumming, would you like to come up? Where's Dylan?
He's over there.
Come on up, Dylan, do you want, he's too shy?
Maybe he'll read it from there.
Okay, that's good, that's all good. Gregory, would you like to come up just for a few?
Yeah.
Come on!
What do I have to say, though?
Just, I don't know, you enjoyed it, whatever, or not.
Your favorite, what's your favorite thing about this experience?
Favorite thing was hanging out with my boy Dylan.
That's his homeboy. That's his homeboy. TJ, come on up, just for a few seconds. No? Okay. Come on, TJ. TJ's one of our partners, go ahead.
It was just fun hanging out with everybody.
That's enough. Ryan Phillips, are you inclined? Do you want to come up to say a few words? No? Zach, do you want to come up? I know you prepared something. Come on up, Zach.
Basketball, banners with my name, active for the team, scream for my team, kind members of the team, everybody used their best effort, terrific fans, brightest part of my day, accept everyone for who they are, look out for each other, lots of exciting games.
Awesome. Noel, would you like to come up and say a few things?
Best team ever, all in this together, sad that it's over, I know I'm sad, excited when I made a shot, tried my hardest, believe I made.
Go ahead, you're doing well.
Teammates, driving to new towns, a lot of exciting games, learn how to play.
Excellent. David, are you going to be shy too? Do you want to say a few words? Come on up, you had a good time. David Michael Williams, one of our partners.
It was really good playing with the different kids. I didn't really talk to them that much, but as soon as I started playing them, I knew them better, you know. So every time I see them in the hallway, before we have a game, they'll be like, "You ready for the game?" I'll be like, "Yeah."
Thank you so much. Focus, would you like to say something? Adam or Scott?
No, it was just a great year.
Close it up, bring up the rear.
Every moment of the year was awesome, from practices to bus trips to games, it was just so much fun, it really, really was. It was a great time.
Yeah, really good experience, I think, for everybody, coaches, volunteers, students. We've had a lot of fun at practice, and I think most importantly, teaching them not just the game, but the life skills that go along with it, has really been special. And I don't think they all realize it yet, but someday they'll look back at it and realize that what they've experienced this year is gonna help them in life, so it's been awesome.
And Mrs. Kavanaugh has some pictures that she wants to share with everybody.
Well, they kind of help me out with everything in the room, so it was a team effort, as you can see, we picked our little effects here. Do you want to tell them what that's picture?
It's a picture of us.
The team.
Still busy day.
So are all these people.
Have fun.
They're all the unified players. And we had two scorekeepers that came to every home game and did the score for us, so that was great. Our loyal fans, we filled up that bus. They were always very hungry after the game.
Oh, yeah.
That's the band. We had the band there to support us.
That was nice, huh, Calvin? That was wonderful.
Here's some of the action shots.
Dylan bringing that ball down. You go! You just caught me coaching from the sideline, Sam.
We do. Now, well, would you like to come up and say a few things?
Best team ever. All in this together. Sad that it's over. I know I'm sad. Excited when I made a shot. Tried my hardest. Believe I made.
Go ahead. You're doing well.
Teammates. Driving to new towns. A lot of exciting games. Learned how to play.
Excellent. David, are you going to be shy too? You want to say a few words? Come on up. You had a good time. David Michael Williams, one of our partners.
Um, it was really good playing with different kids. I didn't really talk to them that much, but as soon as I started playing them, I knew them better. You know, so every time I see them in the hallway, yeah, before we have a game though, be like, you ready for the game? Yeah.
Thank you so much. Focus, would you like to say something? Adam or Scott?
Nah, it was just a great year.
Close it up. Bring up the rear.
Every moment of the year was awesome, uh, from practices to bus trips to games. It was just so much fun. It really, really was. It was a great time.
Yeah, really good experience, I think, for everybody, um, coaches, volunteers, students. But we've had a lot of fun at practice. And, uh, I think most importantly, teaching them, uh, not just the game, but the life skills that go along with it has really been, uh, special. And, um, I don't think they all realize it yet, but someday they'll look back at it and, uh, realize that what they've experienced this year is going to help them, uh, in life. So, it's been awesome.
And Mrs. Kavanaugh has some pictures that she wants to share with everybody.
Well, they kind of helped me out with everything in the room. So, it was a team effort. As you can see, we picked our little effects here. You want to tell them what that's picture?
It's a picture of us.
The team.
Still is today.
So are all these people.
Have fun.
They're all the unified players. And we had two scorekeepers that came to every home game and did the score for us. So, that was great. Our loyal fans. We filled up that bus. They were always very hungry after the game.
Oh, yeah.
That's the band. We had the band there to support us.
That was nice, huh, Calvin? Band went. That was wonderful.
Here's some of the action shots.
Dylan bringing that ball down. You go. You just caught me coaching from the sideline.
These are some quotes from, um, some of the students, which I thought were important to add. They already kind of added their, put them.
Yeah, awesome. Excellent.
A special thank you to the PTC, um, for all the water bottles and the markers and anything that, Band-Aids. You had everything.
Ice packs.
I just want to end by saying, I'm overwhelmed by the support the Tiverton Middle, the Tiverton Middle School Unified Basketball Program has received from the school and the entire Tiverton community. I watched as these students walked out onto the court for the first time with little basketball experience. The amount of growth they made over the past couple of months is significant. It's encouraging as a teacher to watch your students progress. And this unified sports program was, was an opportunity for me to see them progress physically, socially, and academically. I kept score every game and, um, in order to keep score, I had quarters for every basket they scored. So, they knew, and when we get back in the classroom, they're going to have to count the money for the amount that they scored. Um, there was always a way to incorporate it into writing, reading, math, science. The friendships and bonds made between the athletes and players is heartwarming. They all now share an experience that very few will ever forget. Thank you to everyone who has come together to support this program and most of all, to help our students succeed. And thank you all.
I just, I just want to say that these unified basketball teams, this is like a jewel in our sports program. It's, it's just phenomenal for everyone and, and we are just so proud of you guys. You are the best. So, this is incredible. Thank you very much.
Anyone else, Mr.?
You're almost out.
All set? Okay.
You guys are welcome to stay, but we'll give you a minute if you wanted to, to go.
That's awesome.
Providence Country Day. Which she didn't say the time.
Congratulations, Felisa.
Mr. Tibbetot? Mr. Tibbetot? Maybe you can announce when, the time of the games on Thursday?
Oh, sure. Um, yeah, we, well, it starts at 3:30 to increments of, I think, 3:30, 4 o'clock, then I think we have a half hour break, and then we play, uh, the last sixteen minute game at 4:30. Awards are at 5:30.
And these are at?
Providence Country Day.
What I could do to, because that's coming from up here, um, but I could email it out to make sure, but I'm almost positive that's 3:30 increments of half hours and one half hour break. So, 3:30, 4, 5, and then I think, uh, awards at 5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Winning is not everything. It's the only thing.
Okay, Vince.
Okay, um, the Strategic Workforce Development Summit. Diane Sanna, Marty Corcoran, and I went from Tiverton High School. And also people were there from the Newport County Mentor Association that we've been working with. And it was at the STEM Center at Rhode Island College. And what they did was clarify the workforce competencies. And it goes very well along with what we're doing tonight because you all separated into different rooms and they gave you different things that the students would need to fit into the workforce. We all know there's that skills gap that we're trying to work out with the, uh, the employers. They tell us we don't have students to send to them when they graduate. So, the personal characteristics they were looking for were integrity, professionalism, motivation, dependability, and ability to learn. Very interesting. Not that they know everything already, but that they're open to learn, and I thought that was very powerful. And then they said they need the basic, um, of course, lessons of math, reading, writing, spelling, and listening. That's an interesting one because these days, a lot of people just talk their mouth off and don't know how to listen. They've got the next sentence going. And of course, technology. Then they wanted, um, teamwork, following directions, planning, critical thinking, decision-making, ethics, and knowledge, basic tools. So, these are the soft skills that these employers are looking for. And I think it's what we're trying to do in Tiverton High School, which we just showed you, the application of learning. And so, I think we're on the right track here, and it was a wonderful summit. Now, the guest speaker was named Norm Augustine, and he's retired from Lockheed Martin. He was, has a National Medal, uh, Medal of Technology from Congress. He was just amazing. He had so many awards, I can't even mention them. But the interesting thing he said was how important education is. And he said, when they built a plane and it was overweight, he said, we never thought of taking the engine out. And that's what he considers education to be, the engine that's going to try, drive this country forward, and that's what we're trying to do here. So, I was glad that we were mentioned. The Newport County Mentor Association was mentioned two or three times at this summit, which was very powerful. Deborah Gist was there and all the other people. But at first, they said Aquidnic Island. So, of course, right away, I, my head went spinning around and they said, excuse me, of course Newport County, which includes Tiverton and Little Compton. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that that's what we're doing, visiting all these places around the state, putting our school forward and our students forward and talking about all the amazing things we're doing. And none of it involves a kneecap. Thank you very much. Okay, now, the next thing is, oh, the drainage. It's lovely. There's no pond there, no more fishing.
Some would say it's lovely.
No more fishing.
No, the, uh, the work has been completed, uh, on the site. Uh, the pipes have been put in, the drain's been put in. There's just one small area around the drain that was installed, uh, that Clement Rose is going to pave, but for the most, it rained the other day and everything worked fine.
Perfect. And we'd like to thank Mr. Aruda from the Town Council and Mr. Odell.
Absolutely.
For working so hard on this and Mr. Clement Rose.
Yep.
And for just bringing it to a, a simple solution.
And when you go there, except for the, uh, the topsoil that's there, you wouldn't even know the, the work had been done. So, there was no impact on the softball or the baseball fields.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on that?
Well, if we had the boat, yeah, we could have used it.
Did the funding wind up being fifty percent?
Yes.
Twelve, eighty percent.
Yes, we got the bill yesterday and we processed it.
And there was no, no ledge, so that was good.
So, yeah, so it'll be fifty percent will be ours.
Um, now, the Common Core update?
Yes, Diane, um, is going to give a brief update as to where we are with the Common Core curriculum.
He should have a copy of an update that I put together.
That would be this.
And we are on schedule for completion of our new schedule from May through to the end of May. And just as a reminder, this was a collaboration between Bristol Warren, Newport, and Tiverton, and it was facilitated by the Dana Center, but also helped us with our science curriculum. And the work was funded through the Race to the Top grant. Um, the curriculum will provide us with a K through twelve scope and sequence for every grade level and units of study that are aligned to the Common Core state standards. And, um, as far as our teachers' involvement, it was a significant commitment of time. They were, um, participating in these sessions on almost a monthly basis. And they worked in writing teams with teachers from across all three districts. And each session was very intensive and focused and required very strong collaboration skills, as you can imagine, for teachers that don't have a lot of background, working with one another to make some important decisions. Um, within the process, they were analyzing the standards and the research behind the standards, and also supporting documents that were developed from Common Core and PARC that were coming out as we were doing our work. Um, most of the teachers would tell you that it was a great deal of work, but they, they have a much deeper understanding of the standards. And some have even changed, said that it's changed their practice already. They would bring new ideas and learning back to their classrooms. Um, and there are some major shifts in instruction that are needed to support students in reaching the Common Core standards. Um, and so, I think that from their involvement, it will have changed their teaching. Um, I need to see, pull out a couple of other important points. In preparation for the implementation of our new curriculum in September, we recently held grade level rollout sessions. Each grade was, um, provided a day of professional development where they received an introduction to the curriculum, an overview of the process to develop it, and a presentation of the key shifts in content for their grade level. Teachers then worked in small groups and they looked at the instructional units that they'll be teaching in September, and they developed instructional guides that break the unit down into starting to plan for lessons. And within that, they were identifying resources that we currently have that will meet the needs for those lessons. We also identified some supplemental resources that are recently divi, um, developed for Common Core that will help us to fill the gaps. So, those sessions were, um, just held in May. And at the end of each session, we surveyed teachers to see, um, how, how they felt the time was spent. And they all conveyed that it was very helpful, so the results were very favorable. Um, and the same process will be repeated for units in quarter two and also for the remainder of the year. So, um, and to the extent possible, we'll try to continue this collaboration with Bristol Warren and Newport. I think that all of the teachers involved greatly valued the collaboration, so more ideas were brought to the table. Um, they were able to ask questions and talk through instructional strategies with one another. Um, throughout the process, there were some questions that came up that we had to address, and I've listed them for you. I'd like to just point out a couple, and they are over on the right-hand side of the second page. And the first one is, how will the first grade curriculum be impacted for schools that only have half-day kindergarten? So, Tiverton is the only one of the districts that only has a half-day program, and our first grade teachers were wondering, you know, if, how would this impact what they were expected to do in grade one? So, the best response that we should provide to that is that we will monitor the situation at the end of next year and see if we need to make adjustments or provide additional support for our students. The second question, um, and this has come up quite a bit, as to why aren't we just purchasing a new math program for Common Core? And, um, some even wondering, is it just to save money? And they should read through, there are a number of reasons why, and mainly is that there's not anything available right now. So, the publishers are scrambling to put together new curriculum because the shifts in Common Core are very different, and so our current programs won't match that, and they can't just tweak a program here and there. They really need to develop a program from scratch. So, that's one of the reasons why. And then also, we have a team, um, that we've been, um, going to trainings with and taking a look at what's referred to as a tri-state unit developed by New York, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island to evaluate new materials as they come out. So, I think that we're in a good position to continue to keep our eyes on things and look for materials. When all is said and done, it is ideal to have a new mathematics program for each grade rather than teachers having to pull resources from all different places. But, um, for right now, we're doing the best that we can with the materials and resources that we have. We also surveyed other districts in Rhode Island that recently adopted, um, Common Core-aligned mathematics programs, and they're doing exactly the same thing. And they've shared some of their resources with us. Um, I want to thank the principals for their support throughout this whole process. They were wonderful at making sure that teachers had substitutes and that they were prepared for the sessions, um, and also their attendance at the leadership sessions. This year was really difficult with the new educator evaluation system, so for them to be out of the building for, I believe it was three, four days throughout the year, I really appreciate that. We had teachers that served on both the writing teams and the leadership teams, so it was really a very, um, collaborative effort. And the principal's support is really essential to the success of the implementation, and, um, their ongoing support of teachers will be needed next year when we roll this out. So, that is, um, basically what I had as far as the update, and I just have a couple of the written binders too, that you can just take a look at and see what it looks like.
So, when you say we're going to implement this in the fall and, um, there, we need, we need a new program, are we, are we saying that all of our textbooks and materials are now outdated?
We're going to try to use what Diane and the teachers are working on, is to try to find what materials we still use that we have now presently is that we can use also for next year. But as Diane pointed out, one of the problems is that there's, there's nowhere to go. In other words, we-
Right, because there haven't been-
Right, we simply can't go and find something because they're not really on the market or they're still in the test, uh, testing stages. And since it's going to cost a considerable sum of money.
Yeah, that was my next question.
We wanted to make sure that what we go to is worth going to and not-
So, you think, Bill, year, two years of supplemental?
Probably at least, at least the first year, certainly, and maybe even into the second.
Okay.
Because we're really, because you want to, even if the publisher's got something out during the course of the next school year.
You don't want to be the tester.
You really don't want to be, we're not, we're not, we don't have the capacity simply to go drop a quarter of a million dollars or-
And then do it again.
And then do it again three years later. It's simply not feasible for us. So, we have to be very judicious with what we choose to do. And, um, you know, we've talked about this at our ad council meetings with the principals, and, uh, we feel that this is the, uh, most prudent way to, to move forward.
And as far as we know, there's going to be no funds coming down from the state to help the districts purchase?
Not for us. Not for a district like us, no.
Okay. And so, we're starting math Common Core in the fall. What else are we seeing?
ELA will kick up. What the process they're doing now for math, we'll begin with ELA.
Oh, okay. So, the only one that's going to be full implementation?
The only one that will be different, that, that teachers will be dealing with.
And then next year, we'll do for ELA what we did this year for.
Right. And again, due to, even if we had the capacity to train everybody in both, it would just be too much, especially on our elementary teachers, to say, you're going to have a new math curriculum and an ELA curriculum. It would, it just, it just wasn't going to work.
Okay. So, I was just trying to get the handle on this.
But that's how we, uh, built our timeline, with that in mind.
Thank you, Tanya.
I have a couple of questions as well. So, in a perfectly aligned curriculum with the PARC, you would have the issue of teaching to the test disappear, one would think?
It would, yeah, it would be minimized. That's correct. Your curriculum, your curriculum would mirror what the students would be, just before the, the testing craze, if we think back to our own experiences.
We're in the testing craze.
But before, we, we are now. Let's go back to when we were kids.
I'd love to.
Back in the dark ages. Not that far. We still had television, black and white, but still. Was that, and even when I was teaching, teachers, you made up your test based on what you taught. So, we always have taught to a test. They still teach to a test in college, grad school. It's what the professor, the difference has been, what has been deemed important has been shifted away from the classroom decision-making to the state level and to the national level. And that's where a lot of this teaching to the test language comes in, is because people, and I can understand that, feel they have, they don't have the say in what's being taught. It's like they're being told you have to teach this. So, if the curriculum is aligned properly and you get all the bumps out of it, there should be less of that, I'm teaching to the test, as opposed to I'm teaching the curriculum.
Well, hopefully, what you would do is not teach the test, but rather test what you would call that.
Yes. Well, that's right. That's excellently put.
I would envision this process taking several years to be validated.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes.
Part of the whole program.
It takes, it takes three or four years to, to baseline a curriculum, to see where you are with it and how effective it is.
And as we implement next year, the end of each unit, teachers across all three districts will receive an email survey asking them- districts will receive an email survey, asking them, was the number of days for each, for the unit appropriate? Were there any concerns with the content? And then on a quarterly basis, we'll pull together our writing teams to review that information and make any adjustments to the scope and sequence that are needed. So obviously, next year's our first year of doing it, and we have an opportunity to make some adjustments if needed. And we really do envision it as a three-year process. By the time we get it in place and people are comfortable with it, and, you know, the first year is going to be new, by the second year, they'll be familiar with the units. And, you know, I think that it'll take about that long before everybody's really comfortable with it.
Well, and I think, going back to our discussion before, that's why it's real important that if this is our focus, and the next year we're doing ELA, that we're not putting too much focus, especially the lower grades, on that kneecap. You know, we go back to where we only did the two, three weeks right before, just to make sure they were familiar with the test, and we go away from the tremendous focus on it so that our teachers can-
Well, I think you'll naturally see that because of the testing, the new testing cycle-
Right.
With it coming, the first wave in March.
Right.
So right out of the gate, teachers will be teaching. They won't be reviewing, they'll be doing some review, as we normally would do. But they would go right into the curriculum, leading up to the PARC assessment, which would be March, and then you would have the second part of it in May. So you wouldn't have, really wouldn't have the time to review because you're teaching. You wouldn't be able to do that. So teachers should find that, once they get more comfortable with the curriculum, that they will have more time. They'll be spending less time reviewing and more time teaching new material.
So in your experience with curriculums, do you really perceive this, or do you perceive this as really a major shift in what we are doing now from?
Yes.
It's some grade levels more than others. In some ways, the focus of instruction is different. It's more, it's more connected to research. I'll use the example of using visual models. So we've known for years that there are many learners that do so much better when you can, you know, associate the concept with a visual model. So Common Core has more of that in it, and so teachers, although we, you know, always tried to use that, they're having to learn some new models. There's more of an emphasis on fractions in grades three through five. There's more of an emphasis on fluency with addition, subtraction, multiplication, division in the early grades. So, yeah, there are some shifts. But I don't think it's completely foreign. I think that teachers are very good about asking for help where they need it and asking for clarification. And we have a wonderful consultant at the East Bay Collaborative who's very good at helping with those things, and almost kind of anticipating where teachers will maybe struggle with something. And she embedded a lot of that into the PD sessions that she did for us with the curriculum rollout, and the same for middle and high school. That was one of our requests, that the facilitators kind of front-load some content pieces that they felt were new and different for Common Core. And there's quite a bit of information out there. Most of the traditional publishers in the United States who have really been driving our math instruction, they're all pretty much offering the same thing. So the experts who develop Common Core could look and say, this is going to be a shift, and this is going to be a shift. So they've identified those for us.
So then just to clarify the timeline here, we have kneecap right now. Kneecap goes away in 2015?
1415. 1415 for three through eight. And grades 11 have to take both in 2014-15.
So are we creating a gap?
I didn't make it up.
Population, where they're shifting now to a curriculum in their last two years before they actually take the kneecap, and it's not necessarily aligned with the kneecap, it's actually aligned with the PARC?
One of the things that-
Which is why, you know, there is substantial differences in math and methodology-
You will see, in layman's terms, many of the concepts, again, are being shifted down from one grade earlier. So we're going to be asking our students to do more earlier than what they've been done. But it doesn't mean they can't do it. It just means our teachers have to learn, in some cases, learn how to teach it, because they may not have taught certain aspects of it. As you get closer to the high school, you'll see less difference. Actually, I think it'll be more structured, because it'll be Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, as they get tested. So sequentially, at the high school, and even in the middle school in grade eight, I don't think you'll see that big of a change, other than getting used to what they're asking on the test and how the questions are framed. I think that the challenges will probably come in three through seven, three through eight, yeah, three through eight, maybe. But certainly, three through seven.
Well, that's actually my concern, though, is that, you know, math is math, but the methodology of how it's taught and learned can be quite different. And so if questions are framed differently-
I'm trying, I've been saying-
And they're not ever-
No, and I'm just saying all along that we should not be surprised if our scores don't increase and maybe even decrease in the first year or two, simply because we'll be working out the kinks as to what needs to be taught, where, because even once you get the curriculum in writing, you still have to teach it, learn how to pace to get through it, and it's not as, that's why it takes two or three years to really, to get it down. But we've always talked about, and we brought these concerns up a couple of years ago, I call it jumping the track, because you're simply going from one curriculum to another, and there's no bridge here. It's just, it's going to happen. You're just going to change the track, and it's going to be a bumpy ride as we make that transition. And I think if districts aren't preparing for that, then they're going to be surprised later on.
Well, and also potentially intersecting with the as-yet unsettled issue of high school graduates-
Yes.
-being dependent on achieving a certain score on the test.
Because we haven't seen the test yet, the new one, so. But we are doing, again, I think we're doing-
Yeah, it's a substantial problem that, you know, we share with every other district. It's a substantial problem.
It is an issue.
Definitely. Well, and I think that's why nationally, you see some people putting the brakes on Common Core. Certainly Rhode Island hasn't, but several of the states have.
Well, again, we've talked about beating a dead horse, but California and Texas aren't part of it.
Right.
So publishers haven't been quick. The big publishers haven't been quick to jump and invest.
Because they're so big.
Because the two big boys are sitting it out. And they drive, good or bad, they drive the textbook industry in the country, so.
They do.
So eventually, a goal would be of full immersion in a rich curriculum, guided by each individual teacher being able to present it the way they wanted to, would perform, would lead to mastery on the test, right?
Well, they can teach it anywhere. They can teach, they've always had academic freedom. They have a new, they'll have a new scope and sequence.
Right.
That is, they've got to teach X at this point in time, and they have X amount of time to teach it. That's going to be new, and that's what's going to take a lot of the adapting to, because it's going to say, you know, these teachers who've been successful for 10, 20 years or whatever, have been doing things, you know, hey, I do this, I do manipulatives in the fall, in the fourth grade. Well, maybe I don't anymore, you know, with the new curriculum.
Maybe those are in the third grade.
Maybe they're now at the end of the third grade, and I've got to do something new. So, you know, teachers are creatures of habit. Not a bad thing. I come from a family of creatures of habit, but, you know, we have to guide them. And I think we've been doing a pretty good job of trying to support them in this-
It's the important thing, the support.
This change. Is that we understand there's going to be bumps, and maybe some big bumps in the road. But we'll get through it.
I have full confidence in the teachers and the administration in implementing this and making it successful. I think it's just the risk that we run in the transition of the meaning that we assign in these things.
Right.
Right. It would be difficult if there was no, take testing out, it'd be difficult to make the shift anyway, because it's a new curriculum now, because the testing doesn't go away, whether it's for the students or for the teachers. You know, it just adds, as we talked about earlier in previous meetings, just adds to that pressure cooker.
But I think we'll just keep putting this on and letting the parents know-
Yeah, we'll do our best to communicate.
...the things we're doing and being open about it, because it's so serious. It's a serious issue.
And it does, it takes a lot of time, and Diane and the principals and the teachers really, you know, they did science for two years, now math, and then ELA, so it's been quite a Herculean task, you know, to get these curriculums upgraded.
And the science was for kneecap.
Right. And science, I think it's gone through 2017, cross our fingers. So we won't have to toy with that for a couple more years, anyway. Let's hope.
So will the expectation be, then, that teachers will cover the same topics at the same time in every fourth-grade classroom, not only in our district, but perhaps across districts? So if it's the second week in October-
I would say, yes.
-and you walk into a fifth-grade math class, everybody's doing the same lesson?
They'd be in the same unit.
They would be in the same unit. I wouldn't say, you've got to be on, you know, Unit 2A.
You've got to be looking at tabs all at the same time.
On this week. What you have to look at is in chunks of time. And sometimes, I mean, I like that, knowing I had to, you know, a timeline. Others, you know, that might be new to some teachers, just not here, but across the state. But I think districts, you know, Portsmouth, and, I'm sorry, Newport and Bristol Warren, you probably could go in October to a fourth-grade Granger classroom and go to the New Pell School in Newport, or to one of the al mentaries in Bristol Warren, and those teachers would be covering, if not identical material, pretty much close to the same units.
There weren't, there wasn't really a lot of flexibility in how to sequence things within a year, because the Common Core is so intensive with one, in one year, there are certain things that you just have to start at the beginning of the year, and then revisit throughout the year so that they can reach the standard by the end of the year.
Yeah.
So it was very well thought out, and there was a lot of supporting documents and research that helped advise how it is. So our goal is not to have a cookie cutter approach, but to have well-thought-out units that are, you know, scaffolded and data-driven.
And you do have to be, and you do have, and it is scaffolded, because the students are going to be expected to have been taught, as Jerry pointed out, X amount of material by test time, by March, and then later by May. So in order for our kids to perform well, they have to have been taught the material, you know, so.
So the freedom comes in how they teach it.
How they deliver. That's correct. I can't envision any of us saying, you know, it's a Thursday, second week in October, you know, you're only on Section 4.2, you should be on 4.6.
Because I've heard in, say, New York City, there are expectations like that. If it's Monday, you're all doing first page in your math.
First of all, I don't know how you would, it's New York, I don't know how you monitor. I mean, I guess, you know, you've got a group of teachers, and, okay-
And that's a little too restrictive.
Where are you guys on Monday morning?
And every school of students-
That's what comes to mind. And every school, you run a fire drill on one day, well, so they miss their math class.
Or the boiler blows out in February or something.
Snow days, right.
Yep. Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you for that presentation.
I just also want to thank the teachers, because they have been, worked very hard with the first of the science and now with the math, and have been very understanding with us, what we have to do.
And we've invited our, the teachers on the math curriculum, writing teams, and leadership team to our first meeting in July for spotlight on success, and we'll acknowledge-
In June.
Oh, good.
June. Diane will be here in July.
That'll be good.
Maybe not.
She can give the awards out for that, right?
Okay, the quarterly report, Mr. Fiore.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Black. Included in your package is the quarterly report that we compiled with the town for the Division of Municipal Finance. There isn't anything new in here. Mrs. Black just wanted to include this in the package, because she's, it's recommended that she distribute this to her committee, as the front page indicates, that the town officials and the school officials sign this and submit it to the state quarterly. And there are basically these numbers, and what you saw last month when I reported the March financial results.
I know how you love those numbers, Mr. Powers. I want to give those to you. The health and dental pool?
Yes, I have before the committee our health and dental pool participation agreement, which is sent out by the trust whenever the board of directors at the trust determines changes need to be made in all the policies. As I said to you in my communication, it's been sent to our attorneys. They reviewed it, they have no concerns over it. It's really, I'm just asking that we have a record of the vote that we've accepted the proposed agreement.
I can provide a little background. The agreement that we're currently operating from is from GHGRI, which probably is about a decade old. So GHGRI and the trust merged three years ago, and there were some items that conflicted with our original agreement and how the trust operates. So this agreement is going to resolve most of those conflicts and just make, and anything that's, you know, in the decade since GHGRI was created, a lot of the environment has changed. So they did a very good job in this package documenting what the old language is and what the new language is. And as, anytime this agreement changes, they need to give the CEO 30 days to comment on it. So that's one of the reasons Mr. Riri has put this in the package, because we're in that 30-day window. Being a member of the health board, I didn't see any concerns in here. I attend all the meetings and make sure that materials in trust is considered whenever these changes are made.
Any questions? No? All those in favor? Thank you. Middle school vice principal?
Yes, I just want to give an update to the committees. As, I don't know if Jerry was aware, but back in the fall, we had an interview process take place for the vacant vice principal's position at the middle school. There were two candidates, one an internal candidate, Mr. Farish, and an outside candidate. Two names were put forward to me. I met with Mrs. Mitchell to go over, you know, how she wanted to proceed. She thought it would be appropriate to give Mr. Farish the opportunity, since he had filled in as vice principal for the day previously, when Mr. Latuka or Mrs. All had been out. Mr. Farish has done, in my opinion, a very good job as interim, and I will be recommending him to be appointed at our next meeting. I don't believe we need to go back out. We did it once, and I think David has done an excellent job in the position as a first year vice, as an interim vice principal, along with Mrs. Mitchell, who was finishing her first year. They've done, they make a very good team down there, and I'd like to keep them together for the next few years. That's my update.
Any questions on that one? No? Health and wellness policy update, Ms. Sanna? Diane?
We just wanted to update on our involvement with the state initiative for health and wellness and our policy revision. We had a meeting just earlier, and we received some input from our health and wellness subcommittee. We, what we have done is we've taken a policy template that was provided to us, and we adapted it for our own district needs. After having done that, we went back in and I submitted it to the facilitator for the state, and she provided us with some very favorable feedback. She said that we've done a very nice job on the policy review and revision work, and that the graph looks very good, and that it meets all the federal requirements. So that was very good news to hear. She also ran the report card program, if you will, through our policy, and she identified a couple of areas where maybe we could have added some additional language. But our intent was really to not be too prescriptive, but to just present a clear vision for the district for health and wellness. So we are still seeking some input from additional people, and we will bring it to the policy subcommittee soon.
They made a few changes tonight, our policy subcommittee, so we'll bring it to you, the, our policy subcommittee, then can bring it back to us, so everybody got a chance to see it.
We like that, on the policy subcommittee when the policy comes.
It's really, yeah.
Just for our review and comment.
Well, whatever, if you have some idea.
You're in the wrong subcommittee.
And Dr. Larson was the co-chair tonight, which he was very surprised about. Worked out very nicely. Okay, reports and announcements?
Yes.
So Ms. Sanna, you'll, where did you go? Oh, you'll fix, amend that, and then send it to them for me?
Yes.
Okay. Please, thank you.
Yes.
The policy subcommittee can look at it and bring it back to us.
I believe the entire committee attended the Rhode Island School Committee Association's annual meeting at the East Bay offices in Providence to see Mrs. Black receive the Howard K. Award for Excellence in Education. It only took me three phone calls to Mr. Bucandi that day to get me there, because my GPS didn't have-
Yeah, you can't use-
East Bay Boulevard or whatever. Save the Bay Boulevard, so.
Yeah, you can't use GPS for that.
Yeah, I think that was the dump. The old Providence dump, right, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, see?
Tell them that.
See, but we did go, and Mrs. Black and her family was there, and was given the award by Mrs. Gaines from Newport. So, congratulations to Sally. And also, Sally was also recognized for completing 100 hours of professional development at RIOS, quite a, quite an accomplishment by any standard. To give up your, you know, go every, you know, go Saturdays, give up a day, says a lot about Sally's commitment to our district and to the entire state regarding education.
I received a citation from Mayor Tavares.
And we see, I didn't realize that, and we received a citation from Mayor Tavares.
Citizenship, yes.
Excellent.
And also, Mr. Burgundy is also in the Master's Learning Academy for 50 hours or more.
Oh, very good.
Mr. Burgundy, yes.
Well, you've got a long way to go.
I know.
You're only halfway there.
So, it was very nice, thank you for coming, everyone. It was quite an honor to have you there with me, my wonderful school committee.
And we also have the Special Education Regional Awards, are given out to teachers, parents, who help special ed programs throughout the region. It's at the Tiverton Middle School. I nominated two people this year, and I'm pleased to announce that they will be recognized for their work with the high school unified team, Mr. Phillips, who was here earlier at Nacelle C. Combra, for all the work they do with the high school unified team. And I haven't seen the agenda, so there may be other Tivertonians receiving awards, but...
When is that one?
Yes, it's next Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
And they do a nice job over there. So, I just wanted to make that announcement as well.
Yes.
On Friday, May 24th, Fort Barton School will have our 13th annual Memorial Day Parade. We will leave our school grounds at 2:15 in 3rd Avenue to the Silboy Memorial Statue of Main Road for Memorial Day Ceremony. And this year, we will have a guest back, Piper, from the Highlander, Piper, and joining us at our ceremony. So, we'd like to invite all the student members to join us. And of course, Mrs. Black, we'd love for you to come and bring our Fort Barton School mask off.
Okay, thank you. I will.
It's an extra patriotic, and in the morning, you can come to the classroom because we have our annual...
It's a busy day.
Okay.
It's a busy day.
Those are both on the 24th?
Yeah, both on the 24th.
Thank you.
And my other announcement, and it's really up to the committee, I'm, I would recommend that we just schedule our next meeting for the first meeting in June, because I really don't, unless the committee has our first meeting.
The first Tuesday in June, you want to do the second Tuesday?
A regular scheduled June meeting, just do one in June. Because I really...
You want to do the, you want to do the second one, so that you have the week of graduation off, or you'd rather get that one?
I'd rather have us do that one.
The 11th?
Because the second meeting is the eighth grade promotion from the school.
Yeah, the 25th.
So, you have a conflict for your second meeting.
So, we wouldn't be meeting anyway.
Okay.
So, I just, I don't think we need the second meeting in May. For, I mean, we can keep it open if something requires our attention, but...
Right, something came up, right.
No, you know, there's no law required, it's just a consensus. It's not an item on the agenda.
Two weeks from tomorrow, some presentations, Wednesday, beginning of May 29th.
And we're still looking for volunteers to service judges.
Although many community members have already reached out to Mr. Tavares now to become our...
And if you find out which one I'm at, that's where they cook the food.
Oh.
Or build something, because they need something to keep my attention for the three hours, so I'm the visual learner.
And I just wanted to report back that the Policy Subcommittee did meet to discuss draft language for standardized testing incentives. We're going to come back with some draft language to present to the Subcommittee at a future meeting, and then after the Subcommittee's seen that draft language and we've gotten comment, we will bring it back to the whole committee and to the public here.
Oh, good, thank you. That's very good.
And briefly, Mrs. Black, I presented the School Committee with the updated financials through April, and I'm still projecting we're going to be on budget. We're 10 months through the fiscal year now. I'm not anticipating any surprises. A lot of the uncertain amounts during the year, like heating, has, have been completed for the year, and we're just about on budget. Our, our district costs are pretty much where we thought they were going to be at the beginning of the year, so I'm pretty pleased where we are.
You don't anticipate any...
He didn't say that.
But to the contrary, because of the capital expenditures, we're probably going, it's going to look like we had a loss for the year, but it's because we're spending down our balance.
Mr. Fiore, I've had quite a few calls about the Sordi Pond area, Stafford Pond and...
What about it?
The Fall River tuitions.
Yeah, the, that situation, Fall River at one point sent the children that lived in that area to, they tuitioned them to us, and then about four or five years ago, Fall River decided that they weren't going to do that anymore. I don't think there were a lot of new children going to the schools at the time, and they agreed that the children in our system would graduate, but they were, would take any new children into Fall River schools.
We only have two left.
So, they were phasing that out?
Correct.
They phased it out because we notified them that they had to pay an actual per pupil cost for students. They were paying at one time just $2,000, which even six or seven years ago was significantly below our per pupil.
So, we have been billing them at our full $14,000 plus rate. I think there is a situation this year where there are some new students now that are entering school, and I think they came to us based on...
That's what I mean.
They have to go to, they have, we've said, they had to go to Fall River.
I mean, we'll certainly discuss...
Not they had to attend Fall River, but they needed to talk to officials of Fall River.
To find out if they...
To see if they wanted to renew their agreements.
We'll certainly continue any conversations with Fall River if they want to do that, but right now, the agreement was no new children, only the children that were in the system.
Okay.
And that was from Fall River's side of the agreement.
They initiated the change.
Not on our side.
I have a couple of things for the next meeting, please. I see we still have not spent our professional development, so if I could get what PD we spent and from where, even if it's from a grant, I'd like to see that.